The time is seven o'clock. Our first order of business is roll call. Pam, do you want to do the honors?
Yes, sir. Steve Demossi.
Yeah.
Maria Mack.
Here.
Joe Murphy.
Yeah.
John Miano.
Here.
Susan Axelrod.
Here.
Peter Di Stefano.
Here.
Pam Rubenoff, here. And we'll just get the staff and we have James Rabbit.
Present.
Jay Parker.
Here.
Amy Goins.
Here, this is Amy Goins, special legal counsel.
Okay, thank you Pam.
And Brian Wagner.
Oh, there he is. Okay, first item on the is our consent agenda. We have the minutes for August 13th work session. The minutes for August 25th regular session. And we have two items on the administrative officer report. The Denunzio Administrative Subdivision and a change to coastal community structure. But Chino that happened is Beach Meadow. What's what's pleasure?
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda with just a minor correction on the administrative subdivisions. That it's Commodore Oliver Perry Highway.
So noted. I have a second.
Second.
Second from John. All those in favor, Pam, please take the call.
Okay, Steve. Steve Demossi.
Yes.
Maria Mack.
Hi.
Joe Murphy. Joe Murphy.
Hi.
John Miano.
Hi.
Susan Axelrod.
Hi.
Peter Di Stefano.
Hi.
And Pam Rubenoff, aye.
We move on. First item on the agenda is request for reinstatement of the final approval of a major subdivision on Barbers Pond Road subdivision. We have anybody representing the applicant?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just I just brought them in. Audie and Mr. Robenheimer.
Okay.
Hello. Audie Asgad here.
Mr. Robenheimer, you're muted. You need to unmute yourself.
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
Doing all right. How are you?
All right.
Apologize for my technical difficulties here.
That's okay. Are you speaking for the applicant?
I am. My name is Audie Asgad. I am a licensed civil engineer with Dupree Engineering. Mr. Robenheimer is here as well, I think, but he was having some technical challenges as well, so.
Okay. So if you want to proceed then and.
I can. Is it possible for me to share my screen?
Jay will have to.
Mr. Asgad, would you like the site plan to be put up?
Yes, yes, that's fine. That'd be great. I was just going to spend a minute with the existing conditions and then and then sheet four of the site plan would be great. And in the meantime, just for the record, again, my name's Audie Asgad, licensed civil engineer with Dupree Engineering here tonight to request reinstatement of the final plan for property project on Assessor's Flat Eight Lot Five, approximately 10.6 acres. The property was previously permitted by the previous owner, which was a gentleman named Tuck Buffham. The current owners are Josephine Lauren Robenheimer. And they purchased this property after the final plan expired back in March of 2019 and have retained us to help them with the reinstatement of that both through the town and the additional RIDM permitting. So the site plan shown here, you can see where the hand is there near the entrance of the site is on the east side is Barbers Pond Road. The accessway follows an existing gravel access road will be improved somewhat to only 16 feet wide. It actually has a spot in the middle here that's a little bit narrower where threads between two wetlands, one on the north and south side narrows down to 12 feet. Widens back out to 16, provides excess for four new residential lots averaging about an acre apiece and dedicating six acres of permanent open space out of the 10.6 acres of the parcel. Each lot will have its own onsite septic system, which will be an an Advantex pretreatment system with a bottomless sand filter. I'll also have onsite dry wells for stormwater management from the buildings. And the additional impervious areas will be managed by pre-treatment grass filter strips and infiltration trenches along the roads and driveways. So we are in the process of permitting those through RIDM right now. I actually talked to the review engineer today. We will be getting a letter with some comments in it, but they're really about providing some additional calculations to further back up the the design since it was approved by RIDM in 2005. We sort of took a minimalist approach with what information we wanted to provide them with. Just to simplify our package and their review, and they've just asked for a little bit of additional backup for that, so. Onsite wells for each home. The new owners, unlike the previous owner, are anxious to move forward to this project and begin construction. So just something I want to point out for the or that this project was originally approved back in 2006, I believe, and is sort of hung around and been extended a number of times. And I believe as soon as we have a DM permit in hand, the new owners will be back to the town looking for an erosion control permit and looking to start construction of the access road. I did mention new impervious areas. Everything is all the access roads are gravel on the site, so DM still treats them as impervious. But we're taking a very low impact development approach to this project. Checking my notes here to see if there was anything else that sort of critical to point out at this time. I think it's probably worth noting that this project, this access road does continue on through the site. It provides continuing access to a large piece of property owned by the land trust. I think it's like a 60 acre parcel and provides that was negotiated with that the land trust owners and that parcel was subdivided off of this piece as part of the original development of this project, so. Sure, there's plenty more I could cover, but I think at least some of these board members have seen this project previously. It's been through the TRC with minimal comments and be happy to to address any questions that I can of the board at this time.
Any questions from board members?
Yeah, so Mr. Asgad is, do I understand that none of the four lots have been developed yet?
That's correct.
Okay. I guess one of the comments I had, and I realized that this has been out there for a while and that you have sought and you have received additional extensions. But this one expired on March 23rd, 2019, and you're here for the final plan to be reinstated. And I guess my question is, there's been a lot of time has passed since 2005 to now and it's 15 years. And as a major subdivision, we would notice this to all the abutters and so that they understood what was happening. That has been done years ago under the process that was that generated the approval in 2005. But I'm just curious up to any changes from any of the abutters? And how do they get notified? They don't. So I'm just curious if you could explain or detail anything that may be that you're aware of that's occurring outside of the property that abuts the the four lots that you're seeking to be reinstated.
If I understand correctly, the the question would be sort of what what's different now versus when this was approved previously? Or at the very least, when it was expired back in March of 2019? And the design is is from a subdivision land development standpoint, exactly the same. There have been no proposed changes to the plans. There have been no proposed or no changes in the zoning in this area that would have impacted any of the the design that was approved previously. So status quo really, as far as the the town development standards or requirements and what's being proposed other than, as I mentioned, some some minor tweaks to the stormwater management to address specific quality, water quality requirements that DM now has in place. So there is no formal notice process that would have, you know, been where the the abutters would have been noticed. Obviously, the the meeting is noticed. This public meeting is, if I'm not mistaken, there's no notice requirement for a final plan of the abutters as well. So once this had left the preliminary plan stage, I think that would have ended the the actual mailing notice of meetings to any of the abutters, so. Hopefully, this is your your question or concern.
Go ahead, Amy.
John, this is Amy Goins. I think Mr. Asgad is right. And I think we have to take into account the tolling statute on this one. And you know, the board was in a similar position, the community was in a similar position. Once all these told approvals started becoming valid again, people were wondering, you know, what is this? I never I never heard about it. In this case, the original approval approval obviously went through the required notice process. And there is no requirement for notice on a reinstatement.
I I kind of thought that was the answer, Amy. And it was more, and I wasn't, I was less concerned about the development itself, any changes under the plan because they would have to inform us of such. It was more if the applicant was aware of any of the abutters. And if they were doing something else, or if there was a, you know, if there were any concerns that they had heard from abutters.
I I'm not aware of any concerns raised by any of the abutters.
I have a question, Mr. Asgad. You referenced minor tweaks to the stormwater regs, which we understand have have changed in this time period. Are you able to give us a little more information on that? And let us know if that would influence anything related to design or construction, particularly of the roadway?
Certainly, I can address that. My conversations today really centered around the fact that the new regulations have some additional requirements for soil evaluations on the site to confirm groundwater depths and separation from proposed treatment areas to infiltration or to groundwater tables. And in the previous design, the roadside gravel trenches were proposed at about a foot on average from a grass strip between the gravel road and the stone trench. And that really doesn't meet the current requirement for a grass pretreatment strip. We'd probably be looking at something more like five feet. So DM asked if we would either provide a justification for the the narrow or strip or widen the the grass strip to five feet. There were a couple of issues where there was a separation requirement between an infiltration practice and a private well where the requirement is 50 feet. And there were a couple that we have shown at about 44 or 46 feet, something like that. So we'll just need to, you know, make a minor adjustment to the location of of those wells. Other than that, the only other requirements were some comments or the only other comments related to the now required operation and maintenance manual for the stormwater controls for the system to add some additional information in there on maintenance requirements and and budget requirements or budget estimates for those requirements, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Asgad, has the open space been transferred to the land trust already?
The large chunk that I mentioned that was no, that's no longer part of this 10 acres. That was transferred to the land trust many years ago. I don't have a date.
I believe it was, I was on in 2006 along with Maria when that went through. And so the, but they have an easement across that right of way, so the the deeds will reflect that?
Correct, that easement, right, the the easement that they were granted previously is is being relocated. And I have not looked at the the wording of that directly myself, but my understanding from the designer is that and based on this plan that that they retained, the the owner of this land retained the right to, you know, reconfigure that easement slightly.
It allowed the land trust to access it for maintenance purposes, but I believe there was also a an obligation to provide public access as well.
Yeah, I I believe the the easement that's there now provides public access and will continue to to provide public access.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from board members?
Just just to clarify, as I think of it, it provides public access across this property on into the land trust area, does not provide public access to the open space that's part of this development. So just to, just to be clear.
All right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just one note, the Department of Public Services reached out late last week and indicated that the name of the roadway has to be, should be reconsidered. There's a conflict with some other names of roadways in town. So it that requirement or that suggestion didn't make it as a condition, but I think it should be entertained. I believe the applicant was advised of this at TRC as well. They just have to work with DPS to ensure that whatever name they choose is not already in use.
Okay.
Yeah, we have no objection to that.
And I believe Mr. Shuck suggested that it could be as simple as maintaining Barbers Pond Road addresses with letters after the property at the the street address to distinguish between the four.
Okay.
Question for Amy. Would it be appropriate for us to reference the, since the DEM regulations have changed? Would it be appropriate to reference that either in the conditions or findings effect?
This is Amy, so I just, I would like some clarity from Mr. Asgad whether they will be held to the regulations in effect at the time of original approval or the regulations in effect today.
The regulations in effect today.
Okay, so that can be, that can be clarified or mentioned in the motion.
Any other board members have any comments? Jay, do we have anybody in the public that wanted to? I don't see any hands raised.
Steve, can I just ask one last question? I realized that we talked about the change in DEM regs. Amy, and I think that we talked about this last time when we reinstated it. Anything that you would flag in addition in terms of some local regs or policies in our ordinances, our zoning that we should pay attention to as well or that the the applicant should pay attention to? Last time, I think the answer was no.
Amy, Jamie Rabbit, if I may. Jay and I had an opportunity to to review that aspect, given the fact that this is an older subdivision. And the last primary change was in 2012 to the subdivision and land development regulations. And based on review, there was no critical aspects of any amendment that affected this development.
Pam, I I think you can rely on Jamie's answer for that.
Great, thank you, Jamie. Appreciate that. Good way to get to know all the regs, right?
Triumph.
Exactly. All right, well, if there's no further questions from board members and we don't have any hands raised, staff has prepared a motion. What's the board's pleasure in this matter?
I'd be happy to make that motion.
Okay.
The South Kingstown Planning Board hereby reinstates the final plan approval originally granted on August 1, 2007 for the Barbers Pond Road Major Subdivision Flexible Design Residential Project. A proposed four lot subdivision depicted on the plans entitled Barbers Pond Private Subdivision Final Plan Sheet S1 of 1, completed by Cataldo Associates, Inc., 1408 Atwood Avenue, Johnston, Rhode Island, 02919. Prepared for Buffin Family Partnership, CO. Thomas A. Buffin, Jr., dated July 5, 2006, with provisions through July 3, 2007. This reinstatement is granted for a period of one year and shall expire on October 1, 2021. This decision is based on the following findings of fact and conditions of approval as contained in the original final plan approval herein reinstated, be reinstated as follows. Findings of fact, A through F, conditions of approval as amended with number three, to work with DPS to utilize a street name not already in use. And four, a reference for the Rhode Island DEM regulations in effect in effect today.
We have a motion from Maria as amended tonight. Do I have a second?
Second.
From John, any discussion? Okay, Pam, can you take the role, please?
Sure, Peter Di Stefano.
Hi.
Susan Axelrod.
Hi.
Joe Murphy.
Hi.
Maria Mack.
Hi.
Steve Demossi.
Aye.
John Miano.
Aye.
And Pam Rubenoff, aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome, Mr. Asgad, and good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is a pre-application conceptual review and request to combine review stages for a major subdivision, the Hemley subdivision. Looks like Mr. DiOrio is present. Mr. DiOrio, want to unmute yourself?
Good evening.
Good evening. Can you please state the name for the record, please?
Yes, everybody can hear me okay?
Yes.
For the record, Alfred DiOrio, professional land surveyor, state of Rhode Island, representing the applicant this evening on a major subdivision, incorporating flexible furnished provision.
Okay, you have the floor.
Very much. I've submitted a project narrative as part of our application. I'll just hit the highlights here. I'm sure everybody's had an opportunity to take a look at it as well as those in the audience. So the parcel is located on the Wesley side of Ministerial Road. It currently has an area of just under eight acres. I will note that in the project review memo, under property characteristics, it identifies this as 1.93 acres in total area. I think that might be a carryover from another project.
Excuse me for a minute, Mr. DiOrio, just for the board's identification, there was a typo in that first opening paragraph, property description that was, Mr. DiOrio was correct, that was a carryover. My apologies for the error.
Thank you.
And the South Road one, too. It's part of the same sentence.
Yeah.
You treat Ministerial.
Yeah, no problem at all. Anyway, the parcel, just under eight acres, has a furniture of approximately 324 feet on Town Roadway Ministerial Road. The current zoning is R80, surrounded by current residential uses to the north and south Ministerial Road, of course, to the east, open space area to the west. No wetland features currently identified on the site. Topographic conditions, as you can see from the topo, undulating. It's a fascinating site. It's got some very interesting topographic conditions. Soil types from the soil survey of the Gloucester series. We would not anticipate any groundwater or ledge restrictions, obviously with the undulating topography. We're going to have to take some care with the impacts from the slopes. Proposed use is to subdivide the property into two two parcels. There's an existing dwelling located on what we're calling lot number one. If we're looking at sheet number two, there'll be a proposed dwelling located on the the rear parcel, if you will. Nothing is going to be visible from Ministerial Road. Frontage will will be taken care of by the flexible provision. Area satisfied, there'll be, the the existing dwelling is currently serviced by an onsite wastewater treatment system and a well. The rear lot, the new lot, if you will, will be serviced by a new well, new septic and a new driveway leading from Ministerial Road. There was a reference to a recommendation for a shared driveway in the staff report. I fully appreciate that. I did take that up with the with the applicant. Their initial take was that their preference is going to be for a separate driveway. And just to elaborate a little bit on that, I I've designed many shared driveways in my my career. There there were the mechanism of preference in my community as well. I'm sure that everybody on the board can appreciate that there's a big difference between shared driveways on a sheet of paper and shared driveways in the real world. On paper, they look great. In the real world, they can often be a volatile element, not always leading to the best best neighbors. So I'd like to continue that discussion as we move further into the application process. I fully appreciate that the board might prefer a shared driveway, but I hope you'll be receptive to the argument that they're not always the best solution. There's some information regarding the estimate of the population, school age population as well. Certainly, if there are questions regarding the proposal, anything to do with the application, I'm happy to address them, either from the board members or from those in the audience.
Thank you, Mr. DiOrio. I I will add that I understand your feelings about shared driveways. However, this is a scenic road. And I I think you'll find that most of the board members would prefer to see a a single access there for many reasons. But with that, I'll open it up to any comments from board members.
Mr. DiOrio, I agree with strongly with what Steve just said. This is a scenic roadway. And if you happen to travel along it, as I'm sure you have, you'll see that the idea of curb cuts has been minimized for quite some time. So that isn't something that I think would be the board would overall be in favor of. The idea is to preserve the scenic qualities, which is why we have regulations that refer to the buffer and protection of that buffer. I also wondered if you could talk a little bit about the topography on lot two and what the challenges might be for that lot.
Of course. And I appreciate your comments on the issue of the shared driveway, of course. So with regards to lot number two, of course, the attractive component here is if we focus on, we're on sheet number two, of course. If we look to the, what would be the 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 left side of your plan where lot number two is identified, there's a proposed dwelling. It sits high on a knoll with elevations at approximately 174. So that's going to be a, you know, very attractive area in terms of citing a dwelling. I don't think there are going to be challenges with regards to septic or stormwater management on that knoll. It seems to be sizable enough to to handle all of the proposed improvements. I think the challenge before us there, certainly not insurmountable, is going to be the placement of the driveway that's going to lead from east to west, from Ministerial Road to the site. There are some, there's a topographic feature there, a slope, it's at the center bottom of the parcel, if you will, as you view it. That's going to take a little care in its design.
Do you anticipate or have an idea of the amount of clearing of mature trees and any cut and fill that would be required for this challenging driveway?
Well, I don't, I have the imagery embedded behind the mapping and it certainly appears to be a wooded site. I can't tell you that it's densely wooded or not from the imagery. In terms of cuts and fills, the driveway is handled pretty much the same way a roadway is. We do our best to balance those cuts and fills and you can see that we've tried to take that into account with a meandering driveway that tends to work or tries to work with the contours as opposed to running perpendicular to them. All this said, this is still conceptual data and the reality will be when we procure onsite topographic data, whether it matches the conceptual information that we have, that's when the rubber meets the road, that's when we'll know where we're going to put the roadway and how much disturbance we're actually going to have to implement to get the roadway into place.
As you have it drawn now, what is your estimate of the maximum slope of that driveway, right at that middle section of the lot? I said, what is your estimate of the maximum slope of the driveway, given the way you have it shown on the plan?
Yes, yes, I did get the question, bear with me for just a moment.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. Sometimes I have bad reception and voices go in and out, so I'm not sure. You heard my whole question, but I appreciate that.
I'm going to make an estimate here and say we're somewhere in the 15% range. I'm making some quick and dirty estimates in response to your question and that's, of course, without doing any balancing, cut, fill, etc.
But you think you can keep it to about 15%?
Well, I would be, for me, 15% driveway would be fairly steep. I would be trying to do significantly better than that. But as it stands right now, I think that's the order of magnitude that you're looking at when we view that, that hook in the driveway as we move generally from east to west to north to south.
Also, do you foresee the well being a challenge? You're up at a pretty high elevation, have you looked at some of the neighboring properties, perhaps at Broad Hill, that are also at a high elevation and what is their experience with a well?
I have not, the only experience I have here is the adjacent building located on the subject site. My client tells me that there has not been a problem with their water supply.
But they're considerably lower, right, by approximately how many feet?
Well, let's see, I'm looking at their well, they're in the, just under 195, I'm estimating. So yes, certainly significantly lower.
Okay.
I was just wondering if you've had any conversation with the land trust and if they had any input or interest or concerns?
I have not had any dialogue with the land trust at this point in time.
Okay. I'm glad to see that, you know, so the buffer, clearly you have a nice wide buffer with the land trust. So that's, that definitely reduces any impacts and will add to the value of the habitat on their side as well.
Noted. Comments from staff?
No, not really, nothing that's been touched on, that has been touched on yet. There is a 50-foot buffer requirement along Ministerial Road for the scenic pathway. As the regulation is written currently, this development of the site would actually have to come back to the planning board for development plan review for the installation of the roadway within that buffer. But that would happen in the future in conjunction with the building permit.
Okay. This is a public meeting, is there anybody in the public attending this that wishes to comment or has a question? Okay, Hope Leeson's got her hand raised.
Yep, Hope, you are able to talk, I believe you just need to unmute yourself, there you go.
Okay, hi, I live on the other side of Ministerial Road and a little north of this property. And I would.
Hope, can you just state your name and address, please?
I, my name is Hope Leeson and my address is 411 Ministerial Road.
Thank you.
And I would just wanted to say that I would definitely support your argument for having a shared driveway. It's a pretty small lot and the point where the two driveways would be coming out onto Ministerial Road would really be right next to each other and the amount of a shared road is pretty insignificant because it would have to, you could, it would have to really fork off right beyond the buffer for the scenic highway there. So I don't see that it would be a conflict between neighbors because there's really a minimal amount of shared area. And also my, the only other concern I really have is about that steepness of the driveway and, you know, being that it's Gloucester soil, it's pretty gravelly and can rut out pretty well. But, you know, so I guess it would depend on how that's constructed as to whether it's a stable driveway. But at least it faces east, so it won't, it could get some sun in the winter. That's another concern, you know, for ice and things like that. Some of these, you know, it'll get morning sun, but it, you know, it's likely that ice will stay on there in a, you know, cold spell during the winter. But that's my only comment that I have for it. And, or sorry, to just say, yeah, it is all wooded. It's all basically oak and mountain rock over there.
All right, thank you for your comments. All right, this is a pre-app. They have asked for a combined hearing. The staff has prepared a motion. If the board has the pleasure to see that, or was there any more comments or discussion?
Steve, I have a little bit more comments, I guess, in discussion.
Okay.
Overall, I'm pretty good with the way that it's drawn and the way it's shown on the map. And the applicant has more than enough area. I would have preferred, and I still would prefer for that a little more work is done on the driveway. That is occurring right where, the way that it's currently grown out, it presents a lot of restrictions to what options the applicant would have with that driveway. If he would have preferred that he came to this meeting with a little more information on what the maximum slope would be and how he's going to achieve that and then I would feel a little bit better about those lot lines. I'm afraid that as he gets into it, that some of those lot lines may have to change right there where the second lot opens up. And also would prefer if they had done a little bit of research, maybe to the neighboring properties that are also high elevation, just to know that the well will not be a problem. Again, if it is a problem, that may also be something that would influence the lot lines. So my preference would be just that, a little bit more information and that the applicant make sure that works. Otherwise, I'm good with the overall plan.
Well, the burden is on that applicant and as we've stated tonight, the board's pleasure is to see one access there for the shared driveway. And you've made your points, Joe, about location of that driveway. So it should be noted when he comes back that he's got that well defined.
Yeah, I do, I do also support the shared driveway. Just, I'm just concerned that those lot lines, that the way they're drawn, whether it'll give him options on that steepness of that slope. But yeah, that is something that maybe can be taken care of when he comes back. But that's something I think we need to make sure it's not a problem before we give the final approval.
Yeah, and if I, can I add something to that? You know, it's that one little stretch there, it's like Joe's saying, is that one little stretch there? I mean, it's a changing grade of about 30 feet, elevational change in a very, very short distance. It's not going to, it's not going to be handled easily. In order to do it, you'd have to grade well into the other property, I think, to stretch that grade out. I mean, it almost seems like the driveway is going to want to come right across the back of that lot one in order to change the grade to something more doable. And even the proposed house is up at 170, whereas, you know, the existing house is, you know, 92, 93. I mean, it's a pretty big grade change. So I really, I agree that there could be a problem with these lot lines once you start trying to grade out what that driveway is to make it safe. You know, it could be that the lot lines, as they're shown, having that shotgun style all the way to the back, you know, is just going to make a very unsafe condition for any driveway.
Right, and that change in elevation would not bother me if it was in a location where the lot was a lot wider. But being that it's at the location it is, I'm a little concerned about those lot lines until that's known.
Yeah, I mean, it's like, if a cow were going up, if a cow were going up that hill, it would go right across the backside of that other house.
Is that a technical term?
What's that?
Is that a technical measurement?
Take the cow path, right.
I had the same thought, that's why I was asking the questions about the topography and of course, pre-application is such a valuable stage because it really allows for a conversation early on. And Mr. Diario, you have not been out to the site, correct? Most of your estimations are based on GIS data?
I have been to the site, but you are correct, most of what you're looking at here, virtually all of what you're looking at here is existing data. And so let me just speak to the whole concept of topography, boundary lines, etc. I hear your concerns, they're certainly valid. Let's put this in the right box. This is a pre-application submission, existing data not verified on the ground. Clearly, as we move further into the project, we need onsite topographic data so that we can talk about what's really there. And the property lines that are being represented here are the applicant's wishes. You're not approving those lines, of course, you know that. And if those lines need to change to support a more realistic approach to the driveway, then that has to happen. So again, let's keep it in the right box. This is a pre-application submission, you're not reviewing final boundary lines, you're not reviewing topographic data that's actually been accumulated. So again, I hear your concerns, let's just make sure we put a.
Well, but I think, I think what's, what, I don't know that even topo, proposed topo is even required on a minor subdivision like this. I don't know that this being all graded out is going to be something that would even be required. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I.
I will, I will jump in.
Let me finish my point, but what I'm saying is that, that I suggest that it's included, that there's some understanding of what the grades are so that the approval doesn't create a lot that, you know, is just dangerous, frankly. You know, that's all, I don't know that the grading is all required as part of this application anyways, is it?
Well, I will interject, while it may not be, and again, I haven't reviewed your checklist, I think it's impinging on myself as a designer to ensure that grading is illustrated. Don't forget, the folks who are purchasing lot number two are going to be eventually looking for, how do I build this scenario? And if grading is not illustrated on a plan, I feel that I would have been remiss in my design work. So regardless of whether it's required by your checklist, given these particular site conditions, I'm going to have to explain to somebody how they're going to actually construct that driveway. I hope that puts your concerns to rest.
Yes, we definitely wouldn't want to have an approved lot that came back unbuildable due to the problems with access via the driveway. Any further comments from board members? What would you like to do with this?
Mr. Chairman, Jamie Rabbit.
Yes, Jamie.
I can just add one component to the discussion.
Sure.
Again, what I'm hearing from the commission is concerns about shared driveways.
And really for this one, we'll potentially use the conversation of a shared apron or connection to the street where it then breaks off to independent driveways. The limit to disturbance, the aspects of the slope and associated grading with the proposed house as well as the driveway location. Again, it's a 30 to 38-foot slope at that elbow. Change, change, as well as, you know, proposed house box right now that is at elevation 174 and a driveway that ends around 160. So that's a 14-foot change in elevation there. The other aspect, I would say, if you look at this site as it relates to Ministerial Road, you may want the applicant to look closely at sightline because this could be a scenario where sightline is marginal for the existing driveway and it should not be marginal for the additional driveway that may be added or additional residential unit.
Would you, you're making that comment on the aspect of it's a separate driveway or a shared?
Well, if it's a bad scenario for one driveway, it would still be a bad scenario for a second. You have the opportunity to potentially improve that.
Okay.
So notice you are adding another, you know, average daily traffic or ADT with the residential unit can be between eight and 10 trips per day. You will be adding that, adding a secondary unit.
Okay.
And you have this opportunity to perhaps address that during this process. That southern driveway location that's shown there in a pre-concept scenario may actually be the potentially a better location than the existing driveway. As it relates to sightline.
And Mr. Diario, we have provided you with some feedback that should this move forward, we'd like to see answered at our next meeting.
Of course, I've made notes of your concerns. I'm happy to incorporate all of them in any subsequent design.
Thank you.
It's the board's pleasure on this. Staff has prepared a motion for a combined hearing.
I don't see that in.
Yeah, it's on the very last page. Yeah, it's on the very last page. Oh, I'll make that motion. So the motion reads the South Kingstown Planning Board hereby grants the request of the applicant Lee G. Hemmerly Trust. To combine the conceptual master plan and preliminary plan stages of review for the proposed major subdivision. Located at three fifty Ministerial Road Assessor's Platte seventy four lot seven. The applicant shall be required to meet the application requirements for both the conceptual master plan. And preliminary plan stages of review prior to scheduling the required public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion from John. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Maria. Any further discussion? Pam, can you take the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Um, John Riondo.
Hi.
Peter Di Stefano.
Hi.
Susan Axelrod.
Hi.
Joe Murphy.
Hi.
Maria Mack.
Hi.
Steve Demossi.
Hi.
Cam Rubenoff. Hi.
Okay, motion passes. I will see you in the future, Mr. Diario.
Thank you all very much for your time and thoughtful comments.
Okay. Okay, next item on our agenda is public hearings. We had a proposed amendment. To the subdivision land development regulations in association with the Technical Review Committee. I believe Jamie had some comments on that he'd like to make.
Yep, Mr. Chairman, just with regards to this application and the public hearing process, as the commission members are aware. I was in the office for three days last week, and this is, I guess, officially my fifth day. I had a I've been able to have an opportunity with staff as well as a conversation with Amy as town solicitor this afternoon. If the commission would. See within their wherewithal to take continue this public hearing to your next regularly scheduled meeting to give me a little more time. To understand this request and any ramifications of adding. The Conservation Commission to the Technical Review Committee. Typically, my understanding over time has been that the technical review committee boards or that type of. Entity within communities is primarily a staff exercise with the developer. With oversight of that regulatory agency who set up the commission. So again, I'd like a little bit of time to take a deep breath and look into this a little further and do that in consultation with town council.
Okay, thank you. Comments on the board? None. Okay, do I have a motion to continue this to?
I'll I'll make that motion to continue it to our next meeting. Will that be at our work session? Would that give you enough time, which is two weeks? Is that or is this something that we need to do at our regular?
You'd have to do this at a regular meeting or.
It's a continuation of a public hearing.
I would do it. Mr. Chairman, I would recommend a regular meeting.
Okay. So we have. Hey, do you have the date of our next meeting?
Can somebody please inform the Conservation Commission of this change?
Okay.
The next regular meeting in October is the twenty seventh.
Twenty seventh, okay. So Joe's made a motion to continue this to the next to October twenty second. Do I have a second?
That would be the twenty seventh, Mr. Chairman.
Twenty seventh, excuse me.
Yeah, I'll second.
Another second from John. Pam?
Sure, Steve Demossi.
Uh, I.
Maria Mack.
Hi.
Joe Murphy.
Hi.
Susan Axelrod.
Hi.
Peter Di Stefano.
Hi.
John Riondo.
Hi.
Pam Rubenoff. Hi.
Okay, motion passes to continue that to October twenty seventh. Thank you. All right, our next item.
Thank you, members.
Our next item is a recommendations to the town council. We have a proposed ordering ordinance text amendment. And that's associated with the S K home style project. Jay, did you want to provide any background of that or you pretty much?
Um, if Brian would like to share, Brian was spearheading that effort for our department.
Brian, go ahead. Do you have any comments to make on that?
Sorry, I couldn't get my mute turned off for some reason. No, I don't have any additional comments at this time. I did speak with Jamie a little bit this afternoon. As he just pointed out, he's only been in the office a couple of days and he's still trying to absorb the the sum and substance of these. Three ordinance proposals. And I think he was also looking for a little more time to to wrap his arms around that. But I also know he spent some time this afternoon talking to Jeff Davis at Orsley Witten. So I I don't know whether those impressions changed since he talked to me.
Okay. Jamie, did you have any?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I may be able to add a little bit. Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. As Brian has stated, I did have an opportunity to look at this regulation. I did have an opportunity to speak with Jeff Davis. My, you know, the commission's looking to move this forward. This evening, I would make one primary suggestion, and it's really design related. And I'll please understand, a lot of the cottage design comes out of the Katrina and New Urban, you know, Katrina housing. And new urbanist development in the southern portions of the country. Although I know Union Studios has worked on projects in New England. There is a provision contained in the design standards that sets a maximum height of eighteen feet. When you're looking at the square footage of these types of units, they're typically smaller than traditional houses. So if you look at that southern example, they like to have the first floor at nine to ten feet. And if you're looking at a thousand square foot unit. You're looking at something that could be thirty feet wide by thirty feet long or or twenty four by some forty. And your issue there is you you're limited with an eighteen foot structure height. On your ability to modify roof pitch. Most of us in New England are accustomed to. Six, twelve, eight, twelve, ten, twelve, and twelve, twelve pitched roofs. And in most instances, you would be precluded from providing those steeper roofs. If you wanted to move forward with this, the only suggestion I would have is to allow the height of the building to go to twenty six feet. That would still be well below a typical two-story colonial with a six, twelve roof, which tops out at over thirty six feet. So it still would retain the scale of a cottage, but it would give an architect a lot more flexibility. With regards to integrating the design with the surrounding community. But to Brian's point, if you want to give me an extra month, I could provide a lot more insight potentially. But I know you've been working very hard on this. I know Maria's worked on it as well as the commission for a long time. So I don't want to cause any unnecessary delay either.
I know we had some discussion about the building heights, and I know Joe had some comments earlier at the work session about that. Joe, what do you have any thoughts on his suggestion?
Right, I I like the idea of giving the architect a little more flexibility. I think our intent was a single story. But I I like the idea of giving more flexibility. So I'd be okay with a higher height, or truthfully, I'd be okay also. I don't know how the board feels about extending it another month and giving Jamie some more opportunity to make comments. Whatever whatever people's pleasure is.
Comments on the board?
I would really like to get this moved forward. You know, we don't have Jeff with us this evening to discuss. Design parameters and what impact that would have, both good or bad. I know we wanted to keep things small and appropriate so that they would look like cottages. Well, I mean, that's something that the council could change if they desire to do so. But, you know, after all this time, it's been, I don't know, two years since we first started talking about this.
Uh, my thought is I agree with Joe. I like the flexibility of a higher roof height. If 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 you want to give James some time to show us what that may look like, another month wouldn't be the end of the world either. But I'm good with.
Mr. Chairman, I could have examples in two weeks at the work session.
Okay. Pam, you have any thoughts? You okay with?
So I'm just, I I guess I I would like to understand if, you know, and I'm I refer to. In in this instance, Peter and Joe, who have, you know, a lot of expertise in this kind of stuff. If they're comfortable with the height. I'm just wondering what the benefit to waiting another two weeks or a month for Jamie to share that with us. Unless there's a potential for other kinds of changes.
My thought was, Jamie, you were gonna show us some houses or images of houses to make everyone feel more comfortable with that? Is that what you were thinking?
I could I could provide that for you.
But if I hear that Joe and Peter were comfortable enough with that. And again, I I don't have a I don't have an opinion except for that we've had we had that conversation a lot with Jeff and such. But I also agree with Maria that we just keep on kicking the can down the road. And I'm and we have how many things on our agenda? And so I just really, I don't want to get into the same thing that we're getting into with the comp plan of. Okay, it's time. And now we have, you know, and Jamie, this is not anything about you. This is how long our board takes to get things completed. And so so that's just a. A concern because we have gone through this a lot.
So to clarify my comment, when I said I'm I'm okay with the the height, what I was actually referring to was. That I was okay with the height being increased a little bit so that there's greater design flexibility. I agree with Jamie, and we've gone through this through several iterations, both for the cottage housing and also for some of the waterfront properties. The eighteen feet would give you approximately about a six pitch, which is typically like a ranch. And when we were at the waterfront, we were trying to keep it those heights to a kind of a minimum for other reasons. But if we want to have flexibility, small structures, but diversity and design in that cottage development. And then we may want to have allow for flexibility for more than a six pitch roof. That was that was my intent.
I like the idea that it might give us a little more opportunity to have some different designs. You know, not have the same figure all through the car, all same cottage style all through the development. So I would go along with Joe and Peter's recommendation that the heights would make it easier for an architect to design something better. Uh, Susan, you have any comments?
I agree also with Joe and Peter. I think that this is was a good catch by Jamie. And I realize that we need to move this along. I wonder if, Jamie, do you feel like there are other? Things similar to this that you'll catch if you have more time with this? Other good recommendations that you could add to this?
There may be a few. One other, and again, I don't want to get too deep in it to tonight because again, I I understand you have been working really hard on this. But a lot of my background is architecture and urban design. So, you know, I've I've worked with Union Studios before. I'm familiar with Jeremy Lake and Donald Powers with regards to what they stand for. And and the good work that they've done, as well as what Jeff Davis has done with you. But a lot of times you have a requirement for public open space with the shared designation in there. But there's no mandatory requirement of a private space, outdoor space associated with one with a unit. A lot of cottage regulations contain that provision that could easily be added in section nine. So there are only little small aspects to that. But a lot of those things, as your planning director, we could ask a developer to do during the design phase without have it in. Having it in the regulation from a regulatory standpoint, it makes good sense for them. So we could have a a regulation that has certain requirements. And then I also would help the commission walk through a list of things we would have for ass of a developer. As they go through the design aspects. And again, I'm okay if you move it along, but I'm also okay if if you want me to look at it a little further. The other provision, there's a section, I think, on the third page with regards to fences. All interior fences shall be natural materials. I understand the intent of that. But the life cycle of that is susceptible sometimes, especially in a planned unit community where your HOA fees are suspect sometimes. There are some great products out there, AZEC PVC, if anybody's familiar with wall pole fence. And their design, they started as a cedar fence company, but moved into the world of AZEC and PVC. And the life cycle just changes. So if you're looking for a specific look, that look may be guaranteed for longer. Without the maintenance costs associated by an HOA and this type of development. So those are only little small things that I would be looking at. No intent to delay it. I don't want to go around on the carousel any longer. I I would like to really move this along, as well as the commission has stated tonight. So again, I really am at your pleasure tonight of what you would like to do. My only primary suggestion for a for a major change would be the height restriction to move up from eighteen to twenty six feet.
The recommendations you were talking about, Jamie, would that be if we approve the the higher height tonight? Would the other items that you were discussing, would that be something you could recommend to the council when they heard this?
I could I could make those recommendations in concert with with the commission to the council or in in consultation with the chair. But in discussions with Amy. She made me aware that the council likes concise, final regulations that perhaps don't need to be modified anymore. And Amy, maybe you can weigh in on that.
Sure, this is Amy. When the council gets a recommendation from the planning board, there should be no loose ends to be tied up. Any loose ends should be resolved here before the board, before it goes to the council.
Okay.
Well, I thought we removed that, no artificial products for fencing. I thought we were gonna allow that. I mean, we had a, I don't.
You muted, I think, Maria.
I heard that. I have it in my draft copies, third page, item three, just before parking.
I I'm I'm was pretty sure we removed that. I mean, I thought we were gonna. Because we we talked about like, like you mentioned, like manmade products that could last a long time that we don't have to maintain.
Yeah, I I don't.
About building with the actual building materials, you know, related to the building siding and so on. We made that change. I don't recall it being.
I think you made the change with regards to the building materials, and you may not have followed that through with the fence material.
Any any material should be, you know, the 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 manmade products, like you mentioned, James, last way longer and way less maintenance. And they don't look fake like they used to.
Yeah. Well, that that's an easy enough fix if the board is willing to to make that change tonight. Is that a yes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're we're gonna change the. Okay, so we're, we're gonna change the, uh, the building height to a maximum of twenty-six feet. And we're gonna change, uh, fences, um, to be made out of, uh, either natural materials or man-made, or how do you want to word that, Jamie?
Mr. Chairman, when I make a recommendation on that section, um, shall be made of natural materials or products that replicate the look, you know, slash appearance of natural materials.
Okay.
That's actually better language, I think, so that we're not thinking about shiny PVC fences versus something that replicates a look, just like they have those clappers that are made of some kind of a cement material that wear really well and look very nice. That makes me a little more comfortable.
Yeah.
Agreed.
And I agree with the board members that this is something we'd like to move along and, um, to keep kicking these things down to another meeting. Uh, as Jay has mentioned, we, we have a heavy agenda coming up, uh, probably in October, November for sure. So some of these things we need to, to move off our plate. So, having said that, if there's no further comment from board members, uh, is there any public comment for this, uh, item on the agenda? Looks like we don't have any. So with the changes made tonight, uh, staff has prepared a motion, if it's the board's pleasure. Someone make that motion, please.
I guess it should be me, but I'm not sure where the changes are for the, can you tell me where the changes, um, should be that we just discussed?
Mary, is that Maria?
Yes.
Yeah.
Maria, on, um, section five oh two point seven cottage communities, section F, number seven, the building height of all structures shall not exceed twenty-six feet. And then under section H, cottage building design standards.
Page three.
Um, it would be the third page. I don't have them numbered, but it's the third page on my sheet. So section H cottage building design standards, item number three fences. And we would just be adding to the end of natural materials.
Okay, so you said it was section eight, H on page three. Mine says fascia boards. I'm looking at the right page.
Might be page two, Maria. Let me flip it over.
Page two for the height, page three for the fence.
That's it.
Oh, I see it.
Yeah. Top of page two, number seven.
Okay. Um, motion number one. The South Kingstown Planning Board hereby proposes that the town council adopt amendments to the following section of this, oh wait a minute, this is not. This is ADUs. Hmm. So the motion that I have is related to, well, the motion discusses accessory dwelling units and the cottage communities, yes, in one motion? Is that correct, Jay?
I believe so.
Okay.
Yes, I tried to include it all together.
Then, before making this motion, should we have discussion about the ADUs as well?
So noted.
So Jay, do you want to?
Um.
Really discuss that since.
It was in regards to how the, the bonuses were gonna be calculated for the LMI.
Yeah, if you guys will forgive me, I, I, I was busy working on other aspects of workload in our office, and, uh, Brian had worked, was in contact with Jeff and had, uh, taken the SK homestyle project when we became short staffed. So if Brian could provide some input, I think, and you get a lot more out of it than I would.
What's the question?
Maria, I want to know if we want to discuss the changes that were made in that before, as they were included in the, in the motion as well. She just wanted to know if there was going to be any discussion. Obviously, the, uh, the red, the red letters is what you've added, uh, to the text.
Yeah.
And it discusses, uh, how the calculations for the bonuses are gonna work out. Can we change it? Okay. Do you have anything else to add?
Um, no, not, not other than what's in the.
What's in front of us?
The draft edits.
Board members?
Fine.
I know we went over this at, uh, at the work session.
Yep.
See if anybody has the hand raised. No. If you don't have any further comments, um, Maria, do you want to proceed with the motion?
Certainly. Uh, the South Kingstown Planning Board hereby proposes that the town council adopt amendments to the following sections of the South Kingstown zoning ordinance. amend Article four, four oh one, schedule of dimensional regulations, amend Article five, five oh two point six inclusionary zoning, and Article five, five oh two seven cottage community, and amend Article five, five oh three accessory apartments. The proposed amendments are included as attachment A and are proposed for adoption based on the following findings of fact, findings of consistency with the comprehensive plan and findings of consistency with the general purposes of zoning. Findings of fact, A through F, findings of consistency with the comprehensive plan, A through K, finding of consistency with the purposes of zoning, one, two, three, eight, and nine, uh, as amended relative to, um, building height in the cottage community zoning and, um, materials for fence, that are, um, similar to, in appearance to natural materials.
We have a motion from Mia, uh, Maria, as amended, uh, by tonight's discussion. And do I have a second?
Second.
Second from John. Uh, Pam, you want to take the vote?
Actually, before that, I, I apologize. I just found the notes. John's probably saying, yeah, she's adding something at the last moment. Um, I found my notes because I have so many papers here. Um, and I just wanted to ask Amy a question with regards to the, um, the ordinance here, but do we need to have a definition on cottage community? I'm just wondering, you know, often, you know, like in our regulations, we have different definitions for different things. And so I'm just wondering if we need an official definition for our definitions page. So I just didn't know if, I know that there's a purpose and, and all of that, and so I just wanted to clarify, sometimes we need a definition.
Um, this is Amy. It's, it's not strictly necessary to have it defined because, um, you know, I guess the regulation defines it, um. You know, i- is the question whether it should be in the use table as a separate use, or my understanding was this was more just an option for development.
Yeah, I just thought that in the subdivision regulations, don't we have definitions?
Um, we do. So this is a, um, an amendment to the zoning ordinance. Um, many, but not all of the uses listed in the use table have definitions. This isn't really a, a distinct use. This is more defining in the zoning ordinance, uh, a certain type of development. And this sets forth the requirements for the development, so, um.
If you don't feel it's necessary, I, I just, I realized that we never really defined it, you know, as such, as a definition, so I just wanted to ask.
Right, the definition would really just be, you know, as defined under five oh two point seven, uh, yeah, as defined under five oh two point seven. It wouldn't really say anything other than reference this section, so I don't think it's necessary.
I do like what Pam had to say, though, because I think defining something adds to the understanding. Um, and hoping that under five oh two seven, purpose has five different sentences that sort of define it. Um, if anyone thinks that we should add language to that or improve it, perhaps that would be helpful, but I, I totally understand the idea of definition because we, we want this to be something that is well understood and hopefully appreciated.
So what you could do is, um, I, I think the purposes section is good. If you're going to define it, I would just define it in the regular old definition section of the zoning ordinance. So you could approve this with direction to staff to include a definition, which would simply reference this section. Um, you know, as to def, does a definition increase awareness? Um, I, I don't think it does because developers, I, I don't know that they sit down and look at the zoning ordinance, right? You're, you're almost talking of, yeah, right. Um, you're almost talking about, at some point, now that we have all these different options for development, and now we're adding another one, you're almost talking about, um, and, and unfortunately, I'm, you know, the hypothetical is more work for the planning department, but kind of a user's guide to the zoning ordinance, right? Like, what are the different options for development? Um, and, and so I think if you're talking about awareness, it's, it's not really, that's not a goal you can accomplish simply through defining it. Definitions, yes, are a best practice. So I think it's up to the board if you want to include that direction to staff in the motion. That's something that can easily be done before it goes to the council.
I think it would be a nice addition, and I would imagine that Jeff Davis can probably provide some ideal language for that.
So Maria, do you want to?
I do, yes.
Okay.
Amended, and John will second that amendment.
Correct.
Any further discussion? Pam, you take the vote, please.
Um, yes, John Riondo.
Yeah, aye.
Peter Di Stefano.
Aye.
Susan Axelrod.
Aye.
Joe Murphy.
Aye.
Maria Mack.
Aye.
Pam Rubenoff.
Aye.
Steve Demossi.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Uh, Pam, if I could just have a little clarification, the definition you're talking about is going in the subdivision regs, referencing, referencing back to the zoning ordinance? Or in the general list of definitions in the zoning ordinance itself? I think that Amy was recommending in the zoning ordinance. Okay.
Just, Mr. Chairman, if I may, real quickly, just a typical definition of a, a cottage development is a group of small detached structures arranged around a shared central court or, or public open space shared by that community. It, it's literally that simple.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and we would include, Jamie, a, a reference to five oh two point seven. You could take what you said and tack on as, you know, as, um, referenced or as permitted under five oh two point seven.
Again, I may add a sentence to that, working with Jeff, but it, you know, the, the cottage court style housing development is, is a pretty simple, unique, um, type of housing arrangement.
Okay. All right, then. Our next item is, uh, zoning ordinance text amendment for, associated with off-street parking. I think Rich, uh, walked us through this the last time. Didn't you with some diagrams of, uh, parking, parking lanes?
If, Mr. Chairman, I know you have this, uh, information before you. Jay has prepared a staff memo. Uh, I have had an opportunity to review this and also discuss it briefly with the town engineer. Um, I see no, no issues with this proposed amendment to the regulations. It actually brings you, um, in a more consistent realm with what is occurring in the industry and, and throughout the country with regards to parking, uh, nine by eighteen stalls in a twenty-four foot aisle, as well as the other options for angled parking and one-way traffic.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, uh, I believe Rich, um, we were talking this afternoon. You said that there was one measurement you were thinking about adding to the diagram.
Yeah, the only thing I thought might, might, the only thing I thought might be helpful is that on the, on the perspective view, particularly the ones with the angle parking, maybe the next page. If, if you were looking at the table, um, if you look at the table, we have with, uh, parallel to aisle, um, that row, that, yeah, that column right there. But if you refer to the, go back to the sketch, I don't actually, you know, we didn't actually put that dimension on that plan. So just to make it clear, I think we want to add that dimension on the plan. So it would effectively be a vertical dimension between the eye, between the, um, the paint on each one of these diagrams that shows that parallel dimension. It's really sort of neither here nor there, but it's more like, you know, if you came across in the table, you might say, what does that mean? And I think by putting it on those, on those little plan views, and it could actually go on the, um, the perspective as well, it just might help for clarification, that's all. It really should be just, maybe just on the plan view would help. That's the only change.
All right, thank you. Comments from the board?
No, it's consistent with what we have been talking about, so I'm, I'm fine.
Okay. Anyone else? Can you check, uh, anyone in the public like to comment on this? Okay, I don't see any hands raised. It's my pleasure.
I'm willing to read the motion if there's no objections.
Okay.
The South Kingstown Planning Board hereby proposes that the town council adopt amendments to Article sex, seven, section seven eleven, minimum off-street parking requirements, and add Article seven, section seven one three, dimensional requirements for off-street parking as follows. The proposed amendments are included as attachment A and are proposed for adoption based on the following findings of fact, findings of consistency with the comprehensive plan, and findings of consistency with the general purpose of zoning. Findings of fact, A through C, findings of consistency with the comprehensive plan, A through D, and findings of consistency with the purpose of zoning, one, three, eleven, and fourteen.
Second.
Second from Maria. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, Pam?
Just for the record, that's subject to the addition of the width to the back.
Correct, oh, correct. Thank you.
Motions are, are so amended.
Great. Steve Demossi.
Yes.
Maria Mack.
Aye.
Joe Murphy.
Aye.
Susan Axelrod.
Aye.
Peter Di Stefano.
Aye.
John Riondo.
Aye.
Pam Rubenoff, aye, and congratulations, guys, wow, this one has been in our. For a long time, so, good job, staff.
Good to get those moved on. I see we have also a discussion for scheduling a review of the comprehensive materials. In advisory to the Town Council, staff did provide us with the, the redlined copies. Brian or Jay, did, did you get the revised comprehensive plan up on the website as well? We had talked about that. The one that was available on the town's website was the original draft, wasn't the updated draft?
We have not, but we can get that up as soon as tomorrow morning. I'm also waiting on a high-level summary from Kayla documenting. Or rounding out much of the information that I was able to provide you earlier. Really, that information is the best information that the board would have. In a simp- in a, in a simple format, without making it too complicated and really trying to understand exactly what changes there are, they're just. We just don't have the ability in that Adobe Design to. To track change, all the revisions that were made. What I, what we were able to produce was about the best that we could, we could put together for you.
Will we have that, do you think, by our next work session?
Yes, Kayla was supposed to indicate it to me that she would have it, have it to us middle of this week, so I. I expect it certainly by the end of the week.
Okay, this would be great if we could discuss this at the next work session and get it back on the agenda for October.
And, and that was the intent of adding this to the discussion this evening, I, I know there was some indication of. On perhaps not having enough time last month to review the materials that were presented, so. We wanted to make sure that we can get an understanding of the board's comfortfulness going forward and, and moving this on.
And how about the general public, would that. Redlined copy be available to the general public, if, or would they have to? Well, they can't come into the town hall.
No, they can't, and we could very, we could easily make it available on the website. Not, not trying to withhold anything from the public, but it may be more confusing in looking at a Word document. And then looking at that same section in the Adobe InDesign version and trying to figure out or answer the question, well, what happened, this is not the same, it looks different. We certainly can.
How about the executive summary then?
We could provide the executive, executive summary, yeah.
Okay, maybe that would be a better format to go with then. But, I mean, I think the general consensus to a certain extent from the public was, they were ready to move on with it, but. Members did feel they wanted to see what was changed, and again, it was over three year period and many meetings and work sessions, so. Hopefully, we'll, we'll get it right. Go ahead.
I, I know, we're going to put it on the agenda for the work session, and Jay and I have talked about it as well, Steve, you and I have. Is if any commission members see anything glaring, if you can shoot myself or Jay an email. In the next two weeks so that we can come to that meeting as prepared as we can. And if you have a question, we'll try and answer it in the next two weeks with regards to your review of that plan, so we can try and have a really productive meeting. In two weeks.
Okay.
And while we're on that topic, I, I did want to acknowledge that Susan provided me with some grammatical. Changes, some, some typos and some other, other things.
We have a no least.
And we, and I think we also need to, now that Shepherd's run was completed, we need to go back and look at the language in the plan for that and make sure it's consistent with. What they, what the council just recently approved.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just want to inform everybody that earlier this afternoon, I submitted a letter of resignation. To the Town Council. It's been something I've been thinking about for quite a while, and my wife and I are selling our house. We're going to be closing in October, and our new residence unfortunately takes me out of town. So I think with that being said, it's only proper that I resigned, and that's going to be effective immediately. I think it's best for the town and also for the council, so they can appoint and look at another member to fill my, my spot. So I just wanted to say thank you to everybody, Amy, staff, you're all professionals, I appreciate that, Jamie. Probably will never get the opportunity, but, you know, congratulations again. Jay, true consummate professional, thank you. And, and staff, I've been, and council members, and in particular, my colleagues on the board, I really appreciate all of the energy, the enthusiasm. Everything you guys have contributed, I think we've done a lot of good for the town of South Kingstown, something that everybody can be proud of. I know other communities emulate what we have achieved, so that's something you should all remember. And so for the fifteen years of being on the board, it's time to go.
Well, John, I certainly appreciate the service you provided, and I hate to see you go.
Nice job, thank you for everything you've done for the town.
And where are you moving?
Westerly.
Oh, moving into Kayla's old house.
Yeah, you got it.
You can be Jay's, Jay's colleague on the planning board down there.
We need some help there.
Harass Jay now, over there.
He can take my spot.
Did it pay any better down in Westerly?
Well, rumor has it, yeah, five bucks more. I don't know, I'm kidding on that one, but.
If that's the case, they owe me some money.
All right, well, that's the end of our agenda, anything, anybody had to add, or Amy, you have anything to add?
Um, I am going to be forwarding through Jay, a link, I just found out about it today, apparently. There's going to be a session on managing unruly participants at public meetings, locally, we've been, we've been. Lucky in that regard, but I'll forward it in case any of you want to. Sit in on it, and I don't think I have any other updates, I think I'll, I'll may have some updates at the next work, work session.
Okay.
Amy, was there a, was there a, a recording from the last one? In terms of how to manage meetings?
Yes, I will, I will ask Jay to send along that recording as well, the, the DBR did host a, a great training session. Last week, I think a lot of it was aimed at the hosts, right, of the Zoom meetings. But, but certainly a lot of great information for all of you to, to share, I think it was about a hour, two-hour webinar, but yes. Yep, yep, I'll, so I'll share that.
Thank you, Amy.
Amy, I wasn't sure, did they announce that the recording was available? I know they had mentioned it during the end of the meeting, but I never got an email or anything saying that it was.
I thought a link.
It, it may have been circulated internally, so I'll, I'll double check on that, and, and if it is available, I'll, I'll send it along.
They definitely said they were going to make it available during the meeting.
Okay, yeah.
Yes, I, I have a, I was sent a link.
So Steve, it's only been a couple of meetings, but I want to say you're doing a great job chairing, really getting things done pretty efficiently over the last couple of meetings, so.
I appreciate it, doesn't always look so good from this side.
True, true.
I had.
He had some really good trainers, you know.
I would agree with you, Pam.
He's been observing all these years.
So I always, I always had faith in Mr. Demasio.
Okay, do you need a TRC member, if so? I'm overdue to, to volunteer.
Yes, we do, at the moment. The moment, I, I believe we have one reinstatement scheduled.
Okay, my only request is we do it in the afternoon. Can we do it at one?
If you guys could provide some insight, I know we've typically always had, had it between nine, and I think at one point we had it at nine thirty, I think.
My, my previous history, we, it was up to the planning board member to, whether they could make it in the morning or the afternoon.
Whoever volunteered got to choose the time.
Yeah, I mean, morning's a production time for me, and it's very hard for me to get away, but afternoons, so.
Yeah, we can make, we can make that happen.
Okay. All right, anything else on board, if not, I'll entertain a moment.
Second.
Okay, and I think it's unanimous vote, Jamie, welcome aboard.
Thank you, Steve, just before everybody signs off. Open invitation, give me a call, willing to sit down with each member, go over. Talk about the town, talk about the regs, talk about your, your goals, dreams and aspirations and expectations from the department as well as myself. So I'm really excited to be on board, I think I got great staff to work with, which helps me, helps the commission, helps the town. But I really look forward with working with the town of South Kingstown and especially the commission.
I did mention the Jamie that, I think it was Maria mentioned about our action item agenda. And so, Maria, I did, you know, want to mine that, and so. He'll, he'll be looking for, for input and we'll get something, something going on that.
At the finish reading the three hundred and eighty-seven page comp plan.
Okay.
And then look at what we need to do from there.
Down, if you sit down with more than two at a time, you got to notice it, though.
Just think, Jamie, you're saving all this time by commuting, you know, if you work from home, you're not commuting as much, so you have all that extra time.
I have been in the office every day, and if we go to COVID nineteen, I'll probably still be in the office every day.
I don't know about you guys, but I prefer the meetings in the town hall versus Zoom.
True.
I have a feeling, Steve, that when we return to in-person meetings and whenever the general assembly. You know, comes out of hibernation, this format may potentially be, be here to stay. So it may end up being a hybrid meeting going forward, which is twice the work for staff. Unfortunately, but, you know, I just have a feeling that the, the open government advocates and even people on the, the applicant side. Right, people like the convenience, right, there's, there's huge pluses and minuses to, to both settings. So I think we just should prepare ourselves for that possibility, and as everyone was talking, I did think of one other item. The zoning board is now down two members, right, we have five members and two alternates when we're fully staffed or seated. We had a recent resignation, which puts us in a real pickle, because if we have any absences or recusals, we can't proceed. We need five active members to hear applications. If any of you know anyone with a remote interest in serving on the zoning board, please encourage them to get in touch with the town clerk. And submit their name for council consideration.
Right. Point well taken. All right, I guess that's it, we'll see everybody at the next workshop.
Thank you.
Appreciate the early night, have a good one.
Take care, everybody.
Everybody.
Take care, John.
Bye-bye, thanks again, everybody.
All right, John.
Take care, John.